I want to call to order the September 3rd City Council meeting, 6:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the basis of what I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Okay, item 1.1, public comments and announcements. At this time, we'd like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes for each speaker. Shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest, and shall not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly into the microphone before making your comments. Tyler Kabuna? Oh. Hey, Tyler.
My name is Tyler Kabina. I live in 1801 L.A. I appreciate this opportunity to speak tonight. My wife and I both teach and coach at Seabrook Intermediate. We grew up in this neighborhood and grew up. This is the first time I'm speaking today, but I'm glad to be here. As a teacher and coach, I often share with my students and athletes a framework for how we approach challenges and opportunities in life. It's a simple idea. It's a stolen idea. It's not my idea, but one that I believe holds significant relevance to the discussions that we have here at City Council. I tell them that we have five options with everything that we do, five choices. We can approach it, we can choose to be bad, we can choose to be average, and unfortunately, without many of them realizing it, that's an option that they choose, that's left to their own devices. We can also choose to be good, which in my opinion is the bare minimum. You know, that's my job as a teacher and coach, to get them to at least that. And with their efforts and their help and my help, we can get to either an excellent status or even an elite one, which requires a special level of commitment, proactivity, and all sorts of different skills. Now, this framework obviously isn't just for the classroom or playing field. It's a mindset that can guide us in our responsibilities as citizens and leaders and public servants. When it comes to the decisions we make here, I believe, obviously, we should at least aim for excellence, or better yet, that elite status, which again, requires a level of proactivity. Which brings me to a specific item on, which I believe is on the agenda today, and that is the budget proposal that includes funding for high-quality recordings, or continued recordings of all council meetings and committee sessions. Now, a great question was asked by this council a few months back, I can't remember exactly who, but it was raising the question, why have them at all? Why have them for all of them? And I'm going to give my ignorant two cents worth, just give them a shot here. I believe if we're going to try to strive for excellence, it means giving ourselves an opportunity to continue to use these recordings to hold ourselves accountable and continue being transparent in our actions in these committee beings and council meetings. And I say that continually, because I do believe by having these recordings already and having them accessible already, we are maintaining that. But I believe by increasing the quality and maintaining the quality of those that might encourage the idea of holding ourselves accountable in those meetings. And we aren't just, obviously, taking a box by doing that, we're committing ourselves to openness and keeping our community informed. And there's another factor that in the few months that this has been raised that I think should be spoken, and maybe it's incorrect, but I think it could be possible, and that is by increasing the amount of communication that we have or coverage of that communication, that might encourage proactive communication rather than just reactive, ensuring that our citizens aren't just spectators, but allowing us to have active participants in the government process. In many ways, I believe proactive communication can lead to many bridges of empathy between we, the citizens, and the people that sit here on council and obviously, all the committees. And it allows us to hear and understand the concerns, hopes, and ideas of our community members. And when we make a commitment to communicate proactively, we're not just relaying information, we're building trust, fostering dialogue, and ensuring that everyone's voice is heard. So as we consider this budget item, I urge us all to choose excellence, to choose elite, to approve a budget that reflects our dedication to transparency, continued transparency, continued communication, hopefully proactive communication, ensuring that we build a strong, connected, and informed Seabrook. And I'd also like to say, I understand there are probably many limitations to members of council and members of city staff that may keep them from being proactive in more forms of digital communication. I understand those limitations, but if I make one request for including citizens of Seabrook who may be watching this or are here today, that if possible, any form of proactive communication before it gets into this kind of environment would probably help bridge a lot of gaps and empathy for both sides. As ignorant as anybody, and I try to attend these as much as possible, but I think continued coverage, high-quality coverage, and maybe even taking it a step further in some ways may be helpful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tyler. Gary Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and city staff. Thank you for this time and your service. My name is Gary Johnson. I live at 2300 Revstor, number 31101, Seabrook, Texas, 77586. A little bit about me. I have served on master plan committees, planning the zoning committee before my six years on council, and I was mayor pro temp five of those six years. Have lived in the city of Seabrook for 20-plus years. I first want to apologize to Gail Cook, the city manager, and her staff, to having to deal with such accusations and nonsense by certain council members. The definition of wasted energy is a waste of effort and time, money, and causing someone to spend time doing something that is unnecessary. Gail Cook and her staff have done an outstanding job for this city and will continue to do so. And I'm here tonight to say thank you to her staff and to her. Waste of time can and will prove to be fatal. The sheer dysfunction caressing through the city of Seabrook Council is neither productive nor politically sustainable. The internal stress is and will become more than just a matter for city manager and US Council. Remember that. The last several meetings have been disarray, and quite frankly, I'm embarrassed for our city manager, our staff, you as council, mayor, and all the residents in the city of Seabrook. We have an election in May of 2025 to elect a new mayor and three council at large, two, four, and six. What kind of signal is being sent out to the residents when you see and read about the sheer dysfunction of the current council and all the negativities? We have to learn to work together as a team and not as individuals with its own agenda. Trying to micromanage how, where, and even if our city are allowed to grow, is not the answer. Instead, think of demand to live and work in a place like water in a river. Building a dam across the river or channelizing it doesn't make the water go away. The water has to go somewhere. It might rush around the dam or even might overflow the dam, but it will go somewhere. Growth is change. Growth has happened all around us, and US Council have to work together, and it involves all the combined efforts of each individual member who will bring their unique knowledge and skills to the table. Let me say, if everyone is moving forward together, then success will take care of itself. In closing, I support our city manager and her staff. Their focus needs to be managing our parks and recreation, services and police and fire department, emergency medical services, municipal courts, and all the public departments, ensuring our services run as smoothly and efficiently as possible, with citizens able to access the services and programs to live safe and healthy lives. Council members' focus should be policy issues and responses to citizens' needs and wishes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. 2.0 presentations. Proclamation to RevUp Texas. Oh, I'm sorry. 1.1, Mayor, City Council, and our members of city staff may make comments and announcements about city community events.
Upcoming stuff in our fair city. RAD Self-Defense Training Class on Tuesday, September 10th and Thursday, September 12th. That's from 5:30 to 8:30 at Public Works. The Kids Fish is Saturday, September 14th from 8:00 to 10:00. They're on Main Street, Bayside Park. I'll see you there. It ought to be a good time. DF95 Texas State Championship at the same location, Bayside Park. If you haven't seen it, just go watch. It's really cool. They run Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, September 13, 14, and 15, from 9:00 to 6:00. Long day. Saturday from 10:30 to 6:00, and Sunday from 8:00 to 4:00. Two other things, Concerts for Kids benefiting Kids and Paper. That happens Saturday, September 14th from 5:00 to 10:00 at Barge 295. It's a great cause. Go out and support. And Seabrook Saltwater Derby, September 28th. That's another great cause, Barge 295. Go out and support if you can. Is there anything I've missed?
Anybody else, council? Thanks, Rob. Okay, now presentations. Present a proclamation to RevUp Texas declaring September 9th through 2024 through September 13th, 2024 is Disability Voting Rights Week. Please come up. Whereas there are over 6.1 million people with disabilities of all ages living in communities throughout the United States, and whereas there are over 38 million Americans with disabilities who are eligible voters. The disability community has a critical interest in policies and decisions made and enacted at local, state, national, and local levels that impact our lives directly. Whereas making sure people with disabilities have access to voting is essential if these policies are to be met, are to meet the real needs of people with disabilities in our communities. Voting is one way for the disability community to have a say in the people and policies that impact our communities. Whereas RevUp, which stands for Registered, Educate, and Vote, Use Your Power, is a national effort to build the power of the disability community. And whereas members of the National Disability Rights Community are organizing the 7th Annual Disability Voting Rights Week. Now therefore, in support of the growing involvement of the disability community in the political process, I, Tom Kolofsky, Mayor of the city of Seabrook, designate September 9th, 2024 through September 13th, 2024, as Disability Voting Rights Week in the city of Seabrook. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I have something that you, it means a lot to me, and we're trying to encourage disabled people to be civically engaged and register to vote and get out and vote. So, thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. You want to take a picture?
Yes.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure.
He's going to take a picture, too.
And I can email it to you, too.
One, two.
Thank you.
You guys are all registered, though.
Yeah.
I'm looking at me.
Okay.
document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuance of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 13th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And whereas we must ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remember that lost rights may never be regained. Now therefore, in recognition of the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America, I, Tom Kolofsky, Mayor of Seabrook, designate September 17th through September 23rd, 2024, as Constitution Week in the City of Seabrook. And thank you, ladies, for carrying on that tradition. Thank you.
I need you to get a little closer in, to get your jaw in there. Okay, I got one more. Got it.
I'm sorry. My idea. I'm just like, you know, just like, you know, just like, constitutional.
Here we go, round and move.
Thank you, Reba.
This is good.
Okay, okay, 2.3. Bill Neeson, Representative Highland Resources, to present the biannual status report regarding the residents at Highland Center Plan Unit Development.
Hi, I'm not Bill Neeson, but my name is Franny Edmondson. I'm Director of Development and Construction for Highland Resources, here to give an update on the Seabrook project. We don't have any material changes to report right now. We have an architect engaged and have gone through financial modeling. Market conditions between interest rates, cost of constructions, and capital markets have caused us to put this on pause for right now, but it's a project we're very excited about and are looking forward to picking it back up once those conditions have, or market conditions have healed. So, but we're excited about it and committed to, you know, keeping, moving it forward.
Any questions, counsel? Your time.
Any opening when you know progress reports?
No.
Any progress reports telling us where we might be in 12 months or?
No, and again, so much of that is really going to depend on interest rates and then also having more transactions happen out here, so capital markets moving. So, there's too many unknowns for us at this time to give definitive answers on construction start, et cetera. Okay.
Mike?
Just to pony up on what Joe said a couple weeks ago, I know you guys aren't occupying the space, but as long as we can maintain it, I know they spoke to you guys about that, just keeping it clean and maintained would be very helpful.
Yeah, so we have a gentleman who has been keeping it clean for us. He fell ill recently, has been in the hospital, and we didn't realize, but so we are troubleshooting the maintenance out there. It's important to us to keep it clean.
Okay. Well, thank you.
All right, thank you all so much.
Going all the way down here. Appreciate it. Okay, 2.4. Presentation to BayCert for their efforts in supporting the City of Seabrook during Hurricane Barrel. Kevin?
Mayor, Council. Good evening, everybody. It's an honor to stand before you today representing the City of Seabrook and citizens. I'm here to extend our deepest gratitude to the incredible team at BayCert for their unwavering support during Hurricane Barrel. Hurricane Barrel was a formidable storm that tested our city's resilience and the strength of our community. The challenges we faced were immense, from the fierce winds and torrential rains to the widespread flooding and power outages that left many of our city vulnerable and in need of help. But in the face of adversity, we were not alone. From the very first warning of the hurricane, BayCert was ready to act, ready to support. Their dedication to the safety and well-being of the citizens of Seabrook was evident in every action they took. Whether it was coordinating our cooling center, providing needed information, or being a friendly face to our citizens, your presence made all the difference. You were the calm in the storm and helping hand in times of need. I want to take a moment to highlight some of the remarkable contributions BayCert made during this challenging time. Their team worked tirelessly the entire time staffing the cooling center and allowing the Seabrook staff to begin the recovery efforts. The communications they provided was a lifeline for so many, keeping our citizens informed, calm, and prepared for what lies ahead. Their team assisted in the POD, which is a pointed distribution operation, helping pass out MREs, water, and ice on multiple days. These are just a few examples of the countless ways in which you supported the city during this crisis. Because of your efforts, the City of Seabrook was able to weather the storm and begin the recovery process much more quickly than we could have imagined. The lives you impacted, the comfort you brought to our citizens during the darkest hours would not be forgotten. On behalf of the City of Seabrook, I want to personally thank each and every one of you for your courage, your commitment, and your selflessness. These are truly inspiring. You showed us the true meaning of community, and we are forever grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, 3.0. We're going to adjourn into regular session, our regular session and enter into a budget workshop session. 3.1. Review and discuss the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 budget, including special funds and capital improvement program.
All right, Mayor and Counsel, this is our fourth workshop, can't speak either, fourth workshop dealing with the 24-25 budget. We are tonight looking at reviewing the final proposed budget, and this includes all of your special funds that are included within that budget, as well as your capital improvement program or your CIP. We will also move into looking at the proposed tax rate. We will discuss that we did finally get the certified rolls from Harris County Appraisal End and what that meant. And then there will be a need to take a record vote on the budget, a record vote on the tax rate, and set the public hearing date. A review of the budget calendar shows that we started this process early this year, moving into getting what we typically look for in finance of the preliminary values in late July, at which time we expressed in our earlier workshops that we noticed we had an error of approximately $700 million on our values that we had to go back and get corrected. They finally did come in late last week, so we will be discussing the certified values with that error corrected. Tonight, on the 3rd, we will be looking to propose a public hearing date of September the 24th and set that, and that will go to the paper for this week for publication. If all goes well on the 24th, you'll have two ordinances to approve starting our fiscal year on October the 1st. Attached to your agenda is the full budget entirety. These next few slides represent, in generalities, the totals, so if there's any questions, please let me know on the workshop session. But your total operating budget, and this includes all your special funds and components, are just over $56 million. 28.6% of that is your general fund. In general fund specifically, your expenditures are $16.1 million. Public safety, and this is not unusual but typical, is the majority of our expenses led by general government and public works. Expenditures by category for the general fund, again, this is typical for most municipalities. The individuals that serve the city, personnel, are the majority of our cost, so 68.7% was our final calculation, just at that 70% mark for personnel cost. Looking at your entirety budget that's attached on page 46, again, making note that on our final tax rolls, we had to go and make a few changes, and we'll discuss that here in a moment. We did end up with a very flat property value. So when the tax rolls came in, after we look at the exemptions that came off, we have been experiencing a pretty good growth percentage rate year over year, and that is equating to just barely a percent this year. So growth has come to a pretty good halt as far as this particular budget you're looking at. Sales tax, we are taking the assumption still of 4%, so we are not finished out with this fiscal year, and our forecast is not quite there, but we still feel strong that proceeding in the fiscal year forward, a 4% growth is conservative, but something that we can meet. We talked prior on what we call our prior use funds, so we still have that in for $365,500. These are one-time expenses. And then we discussed transfers in as far as the enterprise fund, which is a transfer over, and then the transfer out is what we use, waste management, that's our franchise fee that's attached to our fees for waste management, that goes into our capital improvement fund. The next slide is a little hard to see, but again, referencing back to page 30 of the full document, this is a breakout of the individual departments specific to the general fund, starting with legislative all the way down to disaster. Just noting on disaster, with every storm that we have, we will open up lines to account for those expenses. So, we'll be coming back next year, but we'll have some expenses to show you as far as what has incurred for Hurricane Barrel. On enterprise fund, this starts on page 152. Right now, we are estimating, as we do every year, for the annual water and wastewater usage with our current fees. So this budget does not propose any changes to the water or the wastewater fees at this time. As you know, the City of Pasadena is our pass-through provider, and we have not received any additional rate change as of the date of this meeting. Waste management is also a contract. They have a couple provisions in there that would allow for fuel or any normal surcharges in their industry. We have not received any additional rate increase letters for those services as well. On CIP, the program, it's relatively unchanged, just for items of interest. In the cover letter, we do make mention for this fiscal year that we are injecting the bond program proceeds of approximately $4.3 million. Those will go through three projects, your fire training tower, EMS/EOC expansion, and a new fire truck. We also issued additional debt for certificates of obligation, just for $10 million, and those will go towards primarily street and drainage improvement projects. It's a very long and lengthy list, so I won't go through each one of them, but again, in your attached CIP, these are the projects in your column for fiscal year '25 that we will be tackling within this budget. And overall, your capital improvement budget serves as a planning document, so these are just a little over $166 million that we look into the future, as well as your fiscal year '25 of accomplishing. CIPs broke out into categories. You can see this year, our aggressive approach with the new debt is over 50% investment back into our streets. And that leads us to special funds. Again, not going through each one of these, but this serves as a recap of your full document, so we have a number of special funds that are attached to special uses. Most of them have criteria that are attached to them specifically as well. This is another look at your special funds summary. So in Budget 2025, we went through a number of these in the last workshop. Most of these have nominal amounts that come into them. We expense them out under services or capital, and based on the law that governs those special funds throughout the year, whatever department is managing that usually takes advantage of all of those. Leads us to our other item, and Mayor, I don't know if you want to go ahead and read the second portion of our workshop.
Okay, so we'll adjourn the budget, oh, I'm sorry, review and discuss and provide direction on the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2024-25.
So this will pick up our discussion as far as the, first, the formulation of your property tax rate, and then I will get into the updates of what we have received from Harris County Appraisal District. So as a recap, there's two parts to the property tax rate. Your first is M&amp;O, or the operations. And then to support any debt that's been issued, the second half of the formula is for debt, covering the debt. Since Senate Bill 2, we've changed our terminology, and hopefully by now, this is second-hand, but no new revenue rate, or NNRs, as we'll show in our formula here in a moment, is the requirement for us to calculate, Mike, to calculate with a specific worksheet from the state, that when these rolls come in, we have to calculate the same homes to get the same revenue to come up with that lowest possible rate. Once he calculates that, then there's a few other worksheet exercises we have to go through. It's a very lengthy worksheet. Another calculation on there is voter approval rate. So this is the height of that before you have to go to the voters. If you wanted to raise it to the new state cap, which is 3.5%. The 3.5% is on the operations side of your equation, not the debt. And once that's calculated, we have the VAR or the portion of our rates that we talk about. So on this screen, in summary, the NNR and the VAR are recapped here, and we have, in linked the formula, but basically at the top, your no new revenue rate that we've calculated is .35. Your debt portion is 10 cents, and what we're proposing tonight is a .45. So looking ahead of what we are looking at as far as our, excuse me, our current rate, this will give you just sort of a look back at our current rate. So in the 24 column, you'll see that our current rate is 457755. What we're proposing with this breakout, and this is a little bit bigger font, is to try to keep it as close to that as possible. What does that mean for tonight? With the property rolls that we've received at the city, doing this purely on the worksheet provided to us is, has caused a little bit of a rate hike. So not having in front of you the last work- 25 of accomplishing. CIPs broke out into categories. You can see this year, our aggressive approach with the new debt is over 50% investment back into our streets. And that leads us to special funds. Again, not going through each one of these, but this serves as a recap of your full document. So we have a number of special funds that are attached to special uses. Most of them have criteria that are attached to them specifically as well. This is another look at your special funds summary. So in budget 2025, we went through a number of these in the last workshop. Most of these have nominal amounts that come into them. We expense them out under services or capital, and based on the law that governs those special funds throughout the year, whatever department is managing that usually takes advantage of all of those. Leads us to our other item, and Mayor, I don't know if you want to go ahead and read the second portion of our workshop.
Okay, so we'll adjourn the budget, oh, I'm sorry, review and discuss and provide direction on the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2024, '25.
So this will pick up our discussion as far as the, first, the formulation of your property tax rate, and then I will get into the updates of what we have received from Harris County Appraisal District. So as a recap, there's two parts to the property tax rate. Your first is M&amp;O, or the operations. And then to support any debt that's been issued, the second half of the formula is for debt, covering the debt. Since Senate Bill 2, we've changed our terminology, and hopefully by now, this is secondhand, but no new revenue rate, or NNRs, as we'll show in our formula here in a moment, is the requirement for us to calculate, Mike, to calculate with a specific worksheet from the state, that when these rolls come in, we have to calculate the same homes to get the same revenue to come up with that lowest possible rate. Once he calculates that, then there's a few other worksheet exercises we have to go through. It's a very lengthy worksheet. Another calculation on there is voter approval rate. So this is the height of that before you have to go to the voters, if you wanted to raise it to the new state cap, which is 3.5%. The 3.5% is on the operations side of your equation, not the debt. And once that's calculated, we have the VAR, or the portion of our rates that we talk about. So on this screen, in summary, the NNR and the VAR are recapped here, and we have, in length, the formula, but basically, at the top, your no-new-revenue rate that we've calculated is 35 cents. Your debt portion is 10 cents, and what we're proposing tonight is a 45 cents. So looking ahead of what we are looking at as far as our, excuse me, our current rate, this will give you just sort of a look back at our current rate. So in the 24 column, you'll see that our current rate is 457755. What we're proposing with this breakout, and this is a little bit bigger font, is to try to keep it as close to that as possible. What does that mean for tonight? With the property rolls that we've received at the, at the city, doing this purely on the worksheet provided to us is, has caused a little bit of a rate hike. So not having in front of you the last worksheets that I gave you at the last workshop, on our projections, we were looking at a 4% increase to the property tax rate, and that would be correct. I have a footnote on this slide, and what we're here tonight to propose is that staff has come up with one possible solution that will keep your tax as flat as possible, and that is that we are very healthy in our debt special fund reserves. And so by using the worksheet and the opportunity by the state, you can take some of your reserves as an offset to help lower that property tax rate. This is not something that you can do all the time. We're very healthy with our debt unreserved balance right now. So this is taking into account that there would be just over $1 million from that fund pushed in to lower. Otherwise, we would be looking at what we discussed prior, which was 49 cents per hundred. So this will hopefully balance itself out in the future, but I do want to make note that we have made it slightly different on the worksheet to accommodate trying to keep the property tax as flat as possible. So I'll stop there, and there's a few more slides on properties. Are there any questions as far as the rates? Mike and Kat are here, so they're the experts of how this was calculated. Any specific questions on the rolls?
It's the reserved funds are the, the port fund and the stabilization fund, is that correct?
This is a completely different fund.
Okay. Is that ahead, that's down, we haven't talked about that yet then?
Right, so this, on the rate calculation, we would be pulling, so we, when we make the debt payments, they're coming out of another fund. That fund, when you set up debt, has a reserve. Mike, please.
So this is a separate fund, separate from the budget stabilization and the port funds. This is our debt service fund. So every year, when you're adopting the INS rate, all those funds go into the debt service fund, and much like the maintenance and operation fund, which goes into the general fund, we're constantly getting delinquent tax payments from, you know, people that don't want to pay their taxes, or they go to court, and then they come in at a later date. So same is true for INS, so that, over time, that fund balance has built up. I think we were at 2.2 million in our fund balance right now. So this opportunity to draw that down, to keep the tax relatively unchanged, presented itself, and I pitched the idea.
This is what that, that fund's for, basically?
Yes.
Is for when we're in this kind of situation?
Correct.
Okay, I think that's, that's what I want, no, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have to ask real quick. That fund is not to help mitigate tax, it did not help mitigate tax rate, although it can be used for that. That fund has other purposes for what it can be used for, overflows on the budget and that sort of thing. It's not just for this.
No, 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 and I apologize, maybe I misspoke. Your INS fund, your interest in sinking fund, is your debt service fund, so that portion of the property tax, tonight, it's .1039. All those funds go in, all the revenues go into that fund. That is used specifically to pay debt. That's all you can use it for, is to pay down the debt obligations, your general obligation bonds, your certificate obligations. That's all those funds can be used for. You can't transfer them over to the general fund or anything like that. And this proposal is only if, when I did the true calculation, our debt rate is 14.9. So that's a 4%, or not 4%, it's a 4 cent increase over the proposed rate that we're, we're giving you tonight. By drawing down our fund balance, it allows us to shrink that 4 cents to where we can come in and propose the 10 cent tax rate.
Yeah, questions? Okay. The next slide, basically, the rolls that Mike received is, this is kind of breaking it down that we've done in previous years. So on your far left, your base value, many years ago, when we broke $1 billion in property values, that was a big milestone for our city. So we, you know, fast forward, we're approaching, last year, we were right at that 2 billion mark, but as you can see, we're starting to get flat again, so we're at a base value of 1.8 billion. With the calculations that are made with Mike, we have protested values, and we have exemptions. So right now, we're at 1.6 as far as the net and taxable value for the revenue that you see in your general fund. Looking at it from a picturesque view, this is kind of starting to see a little bit of flattening here at the top of our curve. So we've had a pretty significant and consistent growth on those values, and it's starting to flatten at this particular point. What does that mean for the property tax holders and what this looks like to their checkbook? This is just an example that we also show annually. On your left, you'll see that from last year's appraisal, taking a round number of 300,000 value on a home, how that rate is calculated, that individual would be paying approximately Moving to the right side of this equation, there's two ways of looking at this. Harris County Appraisal District is in charge of what those appraisals are on our homes, and if that changes, that's not anything to do with the city. And so in this example, you can see if the proposed rate of 457755 is reduced to 455156, you would, if the values are not changed, you do, you do have a decrease in your amount. However, if your appraisal is going up, even though the rate may go down, you are still experiencing additional tax. So this just is an example of understanding how that would work, bottom line. The rates, year over year, is another chart to kind of look at. So through the years, dating back to 2015, we've been on a pretty steady decline of, up in the 60s to, we've been in the 40s for a while, last couple, three years now, if this one's adopted. So you can kind of see what that year-over-year trend looks like. So the next items are in your budget agenda briefing as well. This will be moving us over to the next part of the agenda, unless there's any specific questions on the attachment and your budget specifically.
I have one question about, is, is the proposed development in houses taken into consideration in these figures?
No, so on, the only thing that we take into consideration would be like building fees. So we have a little bit of a buffer in our building permit fees that we're anticipating we're going to have new growth there. Every year, we get same homes or same commercial value built into the revenues, and then whatever we've experienced prior, our new values is on top of that, so always.
That's just like a bonus money.
It's icing on the cake. So you get the no-new revenue to get the same amount, and then you get the new values, which allows you to keep up with the growth of your service contracts, your personnel costs, and all of that.
4.0, adjourn to budget workshop, workshop session and enter into budget session. 4.1, consider to take all appropriate action on extending video recording and live streaming to all boards and commissions. Mick here.
All right, so Amanda is not here. Mick is going to serve as my secondary backup, so y'all be patient with me for just a second. I'll pull up the agenda. While I'm doing that, the attachments on your agenda are kind of lengthy, but there was a lot of information put in there purposely to try to help understand what we were looking at as far as, a lot of information. Mick has done an excellent job of, I can't understand all the consultants that we talked to this week and terminology, so there's still a different, a number of different ways that we can do this, very low cost to a higher cost and being completely remote. We are small staff, and that was, as you recall, a lot of my concern as far as city major, of just trying to make sure that we, if we have one person, if she's not available. The, the control panels and everything that's going into this were quite elaborate, and the discussions were quite elaborate. So as a recap, and Mick, come on up, I'll divert to you on several of these. Mick worked extensively with the providers that are the Swagit or the off-site company that indexes, so the video that lines up with the, and takes you right there. The things that we'll be talking about, again, are Swagit as opposed to in-house, and so hopefully, this is, the slides are summary, and if you reference back to the material, we'll try to clarify any questions you may have. Where we landed on concerns as far as one-time expenses, your PEG budget can only be used again for capital. So the three items here serve to show what, starting at the left, would be if we stayed with just staff, we wouldn't be touching the reserves, and so we'd have remaining funds of approximately 70,000, and one-time expense of 35,000. This would be moving to the second option of Swagit Avior, and that would be for us to outsource. So that means we would have cameras that are controlled off-site by a 24/7 provider, and that would have a Swagit install on the capital side of 60,000, and staff still operating at 36,000. I may need a little clarification on that one, Mick, sorry. Lastly, on the far right is the premium that we talked about, which is the four cameras doing a package of 50 meetings, and these come in package totals. Swagit being $60,000 to get all of those cameras installed. We also looked at updated analytics as far as how the views have gone, and these were after those were published. Also, looking at the first live stream, Mick and Amanda went through some analytics to capture this, but just to show what the on and off pattern was of the viewers during the actual live stream.
Could you back up one? Excuse me. If I'm understanding this chart correctly, there's a lot of people logged in, but not many people stayed online for very long. Is that correct?
I believe the average view duration was between 12 and 13 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Mick, I don't know if you want to specifically summarize any of this?
This is mainly just showing that an alternate option, once again, is something that was presented August 6th in a bunch of information all at once, but essentially just pointing out from this slide, which is word-for-word, copy-pasted, that there is a proposed and already budgeted system with our PEG channel with the availability to scale upwards, including online information.
Okay, so again, learning through the week, our Castis right now is a device, a software that will allow us to get back onto the cable channel. So during Hurricane Barrel, amidst us debating this issue, our device that is transmitting and putting it on that cable channel broke. So we are right now needing to replace the 14,000 and some change box. The box, if you have any specific questions, you can explain, but it can do a number of other things, depending on which direction we were to move with this. So when we say Castis, it's a device as well as some software that is partially, we're going to have to purchase some out of PEG right now anyway, just because we're offline with our cable channel. So Mick, I'm gonna let you run through these three options with that.
So essentially, Castis has the capability of providing its own interface for video indexing, which we currently utilize through Open Media Foundation. Swagit would replace Open Media Foundation, and the, we would not need to utilize the Castis indexing side. However, in order to go into ADA compliance with closed captioning, we need at least the bare minimum of getting into that system, so we will already be budgeting for it without utilizing it. And so that's just the, that first 17595, and then the first year of purchase does include the support credit towards the higher tier of support. So that recurring fee, keeping it at, if we went with it at the 1080p HD quality, would be 5,900, but that first year, we're actually looking at 4,100. Swagit basic level ease is the direct comparison. And so that would be going to Swagit, having the recurring fee. It's not in the budget already, which Castis is, and that cost also does not include ADA compliance, so that 31,700 from the first year still needs to be directly on top of the 17595. And then proposed budget is just reiterating the budget that has been published in our proposed documents, is 38,773, and within that, there is $20,000 budgeted specifically for the Castis purchase.
So the last two slides kind of summarize. One of the things, just to point out, as Mick has dove in with the consultants more and more, some of the reoccurring costs, the 5,900, 4,000, there's some reoccurring costs that were not in the original presentation. So those had to get worked in. There was another call with a technical advisor today, so if the premium package were looked at, there's some additional installation with more cameras, more installation costs. So in short, these are the best numbers that we have right now, with the understanding this could go up. In talking to the consultant with a off-site provider of any sort, the, we talked previously that the contract amount typically is going to be 7% increase. They said that we could negotiate possibly a 5% year-over-year increase, but right now, their standard is at least a 7% increase. So as we look at these, just understand that that's kind of their industry standard right now for an increase year-over-year. So Swagit is a, in short, a provider that's going to allow the indexing to happen off-site. Your first option, A, there is getting software with a staff hybrid. Your option B is all meetings, a package of 50, and if you recall, you had a hard copy of what our best estimate is as far as the number of meetings. So we had approximately, you got that handy?
Yes, and it's in the packet presented here. Last year, we ended at 58 meetings for city council, board of adjustment, ADC, and PNC only, so 58.
Okay. So we'd most likely be looking at 75. I don't think I had my 75 slide on this presentation. So, do you want to log in over there? So there's one slide, I'm sorry, that's not on my PDF, she'll pull up, that basically, will show your general fund impacts if we move to a 75 package, which if we are definitely looking at more than council and any kind of remote assistance, then we would be looking at the 75 package. We could start with the 50 package, and what we've been told is the moment you get close to that 50 number, they'll contact us and start quoting per meeting at that point for those remote services. So it would end up being what you'll see on the 75 as well. So while she's pulling that up, I'll just kind of run through generalities. The 75 would start around the 39,000 for the Swagit indexing offsite, all the way down to the basic package of 11,635, which marries what you're seeing on that screen right there. So Mick, when you're ready, let me know, and I'll switch screens, but I'll kind of pause there and see how you want to take the discussion, counsel.
I'm ready with the 75.
Thank you.
Any questions? Go ahead, Rob.
If memory serves, PEG fund currently has around $60,000 in it, and this year is generating around 18,000, and that's expected to decline a bit every year. I don't feel there's no longer cable?
Correct. Our year-to-date currently is 18,000. We receive those funds quarterly. So within the month of August, we were expected to receive our next quarterly payment, which should bring us up towards that 30, 35,000 that we anticipated. But we are seeing a decline between 35 and 30,000 potentially next year.
So which one do you currently have in the budget right now? Is it D or E? What do you have now?
So right now, we do not have, we're taking personnel costs out. Right now, we would anticipate doing one-time costs from PEG to update the cable channel box and get us back into compliance there. We will, we've got the bare minimum on what she's referencing is Open Media. It's sort of the cheapest version of indexing software that we could find. So right now, the live streaming happens, they index afterwards, and we get the polished version of video with the indexing next to that picture-in-picture. That's all done sort of in-house. So we would still, as we stand today with just the council meeting, and that, it would still be very personnel-heavy. If we were to look at doing multiple meetings, our concern right now is having to cross-train other personnel to do the other meetings and make sure that we always have someone there if we're not using the remote service. That's, that's the only concern that we have internally.
So, but we're in compliance now. We're meeting all matrix now, correct?
We are doing everything as far as the live streaming and closed captioning on the platform that we have right now. We are fine. Once we get this box, this $14,000 component box that we'll have to take out of PEG, that will bring us back into current compliance with PEG as far as doing the cable broadcasting.
And staff's okay with the current level that we're at right, once the box is fixed and everything, correct?
As far as the equipment, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, mind you, we're not in compliance right now.
So Hurricane Barrel took out a box that takes it over to the PEG channel, and we've got it ordered.
Question. Are we in compliance right now, yes or no?
The only thing that's not happening right now
It's a yes or no question.
Is, are we broadcasting to PEG channel? No.
And to reiterate, the reason we are down is because the box went down during Hurricane Barrel.
Correct.
Correct? Once that comes back up and we fix that and get it repaired, then we're back in compliance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was, my
That wasn't my question. It was a pretty simple question.
As soon as the box is ordered, we, it's a piece of equipment.
No one's in trouble if you just answer yes or no. You weren't going to be in trouble. I don't understand why you have to, this long, laid-out, well, you know.
All right, let's, let's calm it down.
That's what's wrong with this city. Lack of communication. That's exactly what's wrong.
I have a question. Is there a comparison for the in-house? I know you have mentioned it, but is it on one of these? Because I've got just a lot of information. Because before the last meeting, it was really, it was not far off from us using SwagET versus the cost to do staff, and then we gain the staff hours back, right? I don't see it on here, though.
That would be the option C, SwagET pro all meetings.
But for, to keep it in-house to compare with that SwagET price?
That would be the staff council plus basic Castis. If we kept with E's, that would be the option A, where council maintains the current four-camera being able to be switched in-house, but the indexing and the platform is through SwagET.
So you're saying that the D would be to record all meetings, current, correct? With staff?
It has the capability to, yes, because SwagET is paid per meeting.
I'm not, not SwagET. I'm saying if we kept it in.
Castis does not have that limitation on per meeting. So that cost is the cost.
That is all of the staff hours that would do for all of the meetings?
The 18,000?
Yeah.
No, this is new expenses to the general fund for remote service and new software.
If we work at all BNCs, multi-camera in-house, that personnel cost of 13,470 becomes 27,310.
So comparing apples to apples is what I'm trying to do, are, including the staff hours, the equipment for the other room, which would be the only other, you know, what is, what is that total compared to just letting it, the contract with SwagET? What's the numbers there? Because at the last meeting, we were, I want to say, less than $10,000 in comparison, like seven maybe.
So I believe, I do not have all of my paperwork with me.
Mick, and I'm referring to your summary page on the agenda attachment. So the last one I believe she's referring to is if it's one camera, all boards and commissions, Castis box, closed captioning, there'll be some personnel cost to do with that. And then if you scroll all the way to the right, it'd approximately be 11,600. And then we're showing the fiscal year '26 with a percentage increase. So it'd go from 11,6 to 11,8.
So if we have all the meetings here in council chambers, and all the committees meet in here, they could do it for 11,6. Is that correct?
Right. And this would be changing what we're kind of accustomed to right now. So that would be having a remote service, go to one camera, wide view.
I understand. I'm just saying, so, because my concern is, when we look at the minutes that people are actually viewing at, 11 minutes is not a long time. And we're not talking about hundreds. Now, I agree with the gentleman that addressed council about transparency and communication. I think it's a good thing. But why don't we, there's nothing holding us back from changing once we get it going, is there?
What was the question?
There's no, nothing holding us back from adding to or increasing or improving once we get it going, correct?
No, that's just simply an equipment upgrade, and that's what's driving the, those costs up.
Then, my suggestion would be, let's, let's start at the basic cactus, get it going, try and spice up our meetings so we can get some more viewership. And, and as the viewership increases, then you could justify the expenditure.
But that's not including the staff hours, right?
The, the 11,000 would be just the one camera.
See, then, so that's, we're not getting the full figure.
Well, the, the personnel cost within the 11,635 does include the staff time indexing, because it wouldn't be outsourced indexing. So even if it is one camera, there will still be staff touching essentially the, the product in some way, shape, or form, being the actual marking of the time codes.
So is that, is that column D then?
No, that is still E.
I'm so confused. I, I thought we were close to being, understanding it all last meeting, and now I think we're, we've got more, it's different. And you were the only one, I think, that wouldn't hear.
It's actually more confusing now.
No, I'll watch it from home.
Okay.
So the 11,600 on your E is we are calculating on general fund approximately 6,000 for personnel cost.
And the information that we are referencing is within the, the agenda packet, and it's the first pulled out.
Do we have the la, I'm sorry, buddy, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, do we have the last meetings, a slide that we can just look at? Because it was like on the first page or two.
I apologize. This is very small. But again, Mick has gone through a lot of information. This was kind of tying back to the multiple pages behind this from all the vendors to make sure that we tied back all the actual cost to the contract. So looking at this, if you can see it on your council monitors, this is personnel cost. So there's approximately 6,700 built in to your option E. As you slide across, there's some reoccurring cost for closed captioning and warranty. So that is where we're coming up with the 11,600.
Hey, Rob.
I wouldn't, I would support a scenario where the city council is recorded the way it is now. It works great. I watched the whole city council when I was home sick last meeting. I even stayed awake for it all. Also, the, the number of, of other committees, PNC, ADC, Open Space and Trails, those three, I would fully support recording with a single camera, because that helps mitigate cost. So understanding the impact now and five years from now, when PEG funds are much less reliable than they are now, understanding the impact to our general fund this year for that scenario. City council, as it currently is, three other committees with just a single camera. What's our cost immediately in PEG material only? And what's our labor expenditures over a year?
That, based off of the, it should be option D, the 18,370, if we wanted to just do it in-house with our PEG channel system. And I did find the, the $2,000 variance, that was a combination of utilizing SwagET E's with city council meetings being switched in-house.
So the $18,000, option D, that includes the material PEG funds, and this, this reflects the impact to general funds on an annualized basis, including labor?
Correct.
Well, we'll go back to the 75 meeting. So it's, so D is still the same regardless of how many meetings?
Correct.
C is what we were closest to last, last meeting. That's what we were talking about the most, because it takes out staff having to do anything.
So that one with the 37,000 versus 39,000, it was still staff switching council.
We were, we were talking about the one without outs, that we didn't, we outsourced, so staff wouldn't have to do it.
So that's the 39,970.
Right, yeah.
Which, after getting 39,570, I've gone through this so many different times, the 39,570 or the 39,970, whichever one is the most actually correct. But that, that is the general fund impact.
That general fund impact accounts for continuing to receive PEG funds going forward.
Those won't have anything to do with PEG. This is all general fund.
Oh, you, that's right. You can't use the stronggoing cost. My apologies.
We brought it up as the, here, showing that first year, because typically, when people get new equipment, they bundle that first year charge, and that is how it's able to come out of PEG for that first year. But beyond that, any recurring fees are going towards general fund.
Divorcing the PEG fund issue in question, we're looking at $18,000 impact to general fund on an annualized basis. That is not a nice pill to swallow, but it beats the heck out of 39,000.
Okay, also, is this, this is included with council costs that we've already approved of the council meeting. So what's the difference in adding the meetings, I guess is my question? Because we've already approved the council. So what is it, it's not, it's not $39,000 more.
It, it would be in place of what we've done with council so far, because if we wanted to do city council ourselves and then just use SwagET E's, our county, city council meetings would be on a different platform than the rest of our boards and commissions. And so that is the last presentation, that option B, that is that kind of middle ground, where it's the city council approved the way that we are currently doing it, but in order to keep it within the same SwagET system and having it through the same interface, we still have to pay for those meetings.
Okay, is this, is this presentation from the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, this is where it made, made more sense to me. So that was the meeting, the 37,000 was to, was in-house, doing all the meetings, just like we were doing for council, but you have to do it all, or you or someone else?
This 37,000 is the in-house cost of 13,470, which is the agreed-upon city council being switched, with the outsourcing cost of 22,200, which was the SwagET E's quote for 70, 75 meetings. Because even if, the SwagET E's is, they will put out whatever we send them. So if we decide to in-house council, we will be sending them a fully switched production. If we don't, it's just whatever we choose to send them, which would be a one camera. And that is the, the combination of in-house and outsource.
Okay. And then, but also the advantage of us going to use SwagET versus if you did the in-house, fully loaded option, would you be gaining quite a bit of staff hours back, that you don't have to make your, this your full-time job, basically, because you're a multimedia producer, you have other things to do besides just, you know, recordings. And that was where we would have the advantage to, to gain the staff hours back. I thought that was what we were talking about last meeting. Is that correct? And I mean, it's a decent amount of hours, I'm sure. Do you know?
So, I mean, maybe I'm overstepping, but the staff hour compensation for this right now is just allocating what I'm already paid. So it's, anything that I do is no additional cost. So anything that I do for this meeting is within my current job salary.
Right, right. But I mean, okay.
But, so that 39,970 is completely separate from whatever I do. That 37,670 is really just the additional outsourced cost of 22,200 with the representation of my staff time being the 13,470.
It's my understanding that you want, you had some other ideas in mind for, for her, like, is that correct? Like, if she had more time?
Yeah, well, I mean, her original title, yes. So we hired her as a video producer, and so we've had to step back from any kind of videos to put out on the social media while we were kind of working through this. So the, while we're not on the books saying, you know, $20,000 of her time has been allotted through the general fund, it's actually happened because she's lost that productivity in her role.
Right.
So the SwagET and doing even the one camera, it allows a third party offsite for us to be able to be, what we said before, a one-button push. So whether it's council and/or any other boards, we're kind of looking for that solution. So it also helps with backup. So that will, most likely, and we've had it once, where we need to find somebody very quickly to take them up to the control panel, and there's a million buttons, and you, we basically expect somebody to sit in that chair and be able to run this if we keep it all in-house. So I do have some concerns. If we keep it all in-house, we're putting a lot of eggs in one basket and then hoping our backups understand it if we need them. in one basket and then hoping our backups understand it if we need them.
Yeah, and I agree with that. And I, I would, I'd like to see us outsource this and the fully loaded option like we've been doing because again, we're going back, we're going back and it's, you're going to have to sit there and fast-forward if you can fast-forward. You can't just go, you know, to the hyperlink now that you can, if the one camera and no indexing, is that correct? You won't be able to click on that?
It would still be indexed.
Okay.
It would just be through a different platform, it wouldn't be open media, it would be through Castis, the PEG provider. And that 11,635 is still a staff member going through and indexing, so selecting those time codes. But beyond that, that is all that they do and it is a lot less intensive on cross-training.
If this is in pursuit of transparency, it's recorded, which meets the legal requirements, I'd absolutely support option D at, at the lower price, which provides video support as well. But I can't see a way to justify another $20,000 a year of our taxpayers' money for the convenience of having it indexed and subtitled and having the camera show the face of whoever's talking instead of just one camera. I'm, I'm sorry, I can't support that. That has nothing to do with transparency, that has everything to do with convenience, if you could call it that, but I couldn't support that.
I don't agree with that. And also it was proposed that they give the city employees a 3% increase this year on top of their 2.5. So there's your money that you have to save to be able to do this program.
I agree with Rob. And again, I'd like to reiterate, until we get a viewership that would justify an increase for the expenditure and coverage, and let's just see how the population responds to it. And, you know, we're meeting the requirements. And again, just looking at the revenues and there's just not huge increases that are added to warrant taxes, I mean, I think it's a good start.
That was the first meeting livestreamed.
The basic Castis, okay, would that go through YouTube or is it going to be, is Castis, you have to watch it on your TV?
So Castis has, it will control the PEG channel. So the PEG channel, we can have it scheduled at certain times for it to go. It can also be live broadcast, cable cast to our PEG channel as well as live stream. It is its own video on-demand interface in the same way that Swagit is. So you can go in and you can select.
So you would go to castis.com or whatever?
It would be on our website, the same way that it currently is.
Okay.
We would make sure to have it embedded.
Okay.
One more question. Line B, Swagit E's for all meetings, what, what additional do we get with that one?
That, 75 meetings is whatever meetings we choose to do. We are currently on track for if we did all meetings, we're on track for 81 across everything. Otherwise, 55 is kind of what we're looking at for the, the main three and city council. But it would just be one camera. Or if we wanted to, on top of that 26,100, do any additional manipulations to the feed that we supply them, but otherwise it would be a one-camera feed for everything.
So really not a lot of additional options on that one?
The main thing would be staff not switching the system during the meeting and the offloading of the after-hours effects of the actual act of indexing.
Okay, it's just labor then? All right. Any other questions?
Is this, the basic Castis would also be, would be recording all of the committee meetings in this room, but if we needed two meetings at the same time we're going on, we'd have a camera set up in the other conference room?
That was within the previous.
That $18,000?
Was, we were looking at the additional 2,500 to outfit that with a camera and utilizing the microphone that's already within there.
And is that included in the $11,000 amount?
Not in that current 11,000, no. That was with everything being here in council chambers.
But I thought we couldn't do, we had to have a second room.
So based off of the way that I was looking at it, so far this year, we have only had two instances of having concurrent meetings.
And what would you do in that situation?
We can record and then upload after the fact. But even still, if we're going out to the PEG channel, we can only supply one feed at a time. So we would have to pick and choose which one we would cast to the PEG channel and then let people choose their live streams.
Well, like the last meeting or the meeting before that when EDC was here, we had a joint meeting and then they had a meeting of, in that room. So how would you handle that because you don't have cameras in that room, right?
It would just be putting a camera in. If it's such a, a rare one-off, it can utilize equipment that we already have, putting it on, a camera on a tripod.
Okay, gotcha, all right, thank you.
I got one more question.
Go ahead, Tom. Are there any other costs involved as we go through the years? Do we have increases? Do we have warranties? Do we have replacement? How, how does that look on any of these programs?
So that is covered within the, that 7% increase for Swagit. I did confirm with the Castis vendor that their fees will never increase. So their contract, their upkeep, software, subscription, all of that will maintain the same cost for our entirety of ownership, is what he said specifically. Otherwise, replacing equipment as they get outdated, if anything gets faulty, typically good rule of thumb is replacement of equipment every six to nine years, I think. It depends on the equipment.
Anybody else? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve option D.
Second. D, D and Delta.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? 4.2, consider to take all appropriate action under custom barge 295 for hotel occupancy tax funds in the amount of $28,500 for fiscal year 2024-25 to include a s- Took that off the screen. To include a schedule for releasing funds to the applicant if approved. Do I hear a motion? Oh, okay. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. Mike Robinson, barge 295, 2613 and a half, Nassau Parkway, Seabrook. First of all, thank you for working with us to have this meeting later. There was some communication issues on the timing of the application and I think we got everything sorted out and Amanda has worked with us to, to get the application in, so we appreciate your consideration. We're requesting funds for an annual fall music fest featuring Pat Green. Pat Green's a well-known Texas artist that's played at the barge twice in the past and has sold out in both events. It's a family-friendly show and is well-liked by all age groups. We're confident that we can reach the same numbers this year, which is roughly 1,000 participants. I'm not sure, as this is our first presentation, we don't really have any historical data as far as what the impact on the hotels would be, but we have run numbers in the past in regards to the zip codes associated with the credit card purchases for the tickets. And the last one that we ran last year, I think was 65%, we're roughly outside of a 30-mile radius of Seabrook. So we anticipate that the majority of those people might be likely to, to stay in a, in a hotel here locally. Do you guys have any questions about the budget or?
What would be the expenditures for the 28,000?
Okay, so we have advertising, print advertising of $8,000, that would be mailers, flyers and posters. The signage would be digital billboard with, and vinyl for four weeks. And that's 2, $10,270. The radio ads would be $4,000. Social media is, I'm sorry, $5,000. And the website would be 2,000. And the marketing director fee would be $1,000. And that all adds up to the requested amount.
Mike?
So, I understand he's been here before, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, which it was very successful. And he didn't need our funds then, right? So you, you, you did well. So only my concern is, this is the first time. Keels and Wheels gets a little bit more and they've been with us for many, many, many years and they have a track record. So I, I, I'm not saying, I'm not for it, but at the same time. If I went to the hotels right now and asked them how they did during that event, I guarantee you, they don't, they don't, they don't have a track record, they don't know either. And if I took, spoke to the hotels, if they wanted us to give them, give you $28,000 right now, I think they would be up in arms, to be honest, because I just don't think there's enough there to justify giving you that kind of money. They would rather that money be spent on Space Center Houston, highway signs, something that's going to drive business more frequently than just a weekend event. I like the idea, I'm not saying I don't like it, but I just don't think it justifies right now because again, I don't think you have enough data right now. I mean, I, I think you need to, you need to do Pat Green and jot it all down, get with the hotels, figure it all out this year and see how it goes and come back to us and say, okay, this is what I've got. And I've got five hotels in the audience that will vouch that, hey, I increased their occupancy by a certain percentage or here's how many rooms that they had or whatever, because that's what the hotels expect us to use that money for. And I think it is potential for that, but I think right now, since it's so new, it's just a lot of money, so that's why I just can't support it right now. But down the road, obviously, yeah, but I just think we need more data.
I understand your concerns and the only thing that I have to go off is the experience that I've had with other events that you guys have allocated funds to. For example, Texas Outlaw Challenge, I've been a member of, of that for over seven years in assisting with them, we've actually hosted multiple events. And what I can tell you just from my own personal experiences, the events that we put on garner at least twice as much participation from the public. So, I think, you know, we know based off of the discussions that we've had with our patrons and the number of people that ask us about hotels and where to stay, I'm, I'm confident that when we do have our events, that people are coming and staying in these places and also going to the restaurants and other, you know, places here locally.
Yeah, no, I mean, I appreciate that, but we, we understand the confidence and I agree with you, but at the same time, we need hard numbers that support that. These other events have been on there for a long time and so that's why we can justify it a little bit more. So, I mean, I know this weekend, you know, we, we had friends come down, but they live all the way in Cypress, an hour and a half away and they, they drove back home. You know, they didn't stay at my house, they didn't stay at a hotel. We, we know some of them will, depending on what, but.
We recommend to all of our guests that come in and have drinks that they stay locally. We don't want anybody driving home.
I just wanted to add something, Bill Hummel, the general manager of barge. So this is the first time for the Hot Tax for us. And obviously we want to start and we're going to have this a yearly event. It's not going to be Pat Green every single year, but we have to start somewhere. I mean, you can see all the money that's allocated to advertising, you know, bringing people down. And we're just trying to make the attendance more. And then for it to be a yearly fall festival, you know, for, for it to be out there and just to drag more people in.
And also just to help people to understand that we are back open in some capacity. So as you can imagine, all of the public media and media exposure that we had over the past couple of months, the sinking of the barge, I mean, it's been pretty devastating to, to business. And at the, currently, even though we are back open in the yards, I mean, our numbers are dismal compared to what we would normally be doing. So it's events like this that keep us going.
Is it a one night or a two night?
It's one night.
It's a one night?
Yes, sir.
It's a Friday or a Saturday?
This is on a Friday.
Friday.
Well, well, you know, guys, this is what Hot Tax is for. You know, this, this is, if these events are going to come in, especially Pat Green or some other headliner, and put heads in beds, we have looked at this in the past, this is what we need to spend the Hot Tax money for. 28,000 is a little bit of a leap. I'd be, you know, just, just throwing something out, I mean, half of that number is, 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 you know, something that we can start out with. But I believe that this is our duty to, to sponsor events like this. This is, this is what it's for. You know, we've had events in the past that, you know, we can't trace the hotels either. You know, we, you know, there's a number of events we have that, you know, we don't know how many people are staying in hotels, in Seabrook anyway. You know, maybe over at South Shore or Hilton or wherever, which aren't in Seabrook. So if there's, if there's a, if there is an event that, such as a Pat Green or someone else, that I say we give it a try. You know, and we do, we do our duty to, to track the hotels. You know, Hot Tax is for, if you put one head in bed, it's, it's a, it's a win. So, you know, if, if some, if we're bringing in 1,000 people and, you know, 50 of them are going to stay in a hotel, that's a win. And that's what it's for.
No, well, no, I agree, Mayor, that's not the question at hand. I, I agree, I think we should do something. I don't think it's to that extent, but at the same time, the events coming in in October and here we are in September, you're a month out. He's already done enough advertising that's going to already bring heads in beds for this year.
We've done zero advertising.
Oh, okay. So, I mean, it, it's, it's, you know, I just feel like, I mean, we can do something, but I don't think we should do that amount. I, I agree, but I would propose more of around 5,000, but just to get it started and see how it goes, because I still think we need to talk to the hotels and also see, see what's going on there.
We've had some discussions with the hotels. We're also taking some additional steps. So for these events, we sell tickets through a ticket broker, this is called, one called Outhouse. And every time someone purchases a ticket, they receive an email receipt and with that email receipt, they're going to receive a visit Seabrook package that's going to have a list of all the hotels, the QR codes associated that they need to use to help track this event, along with the addresses, phone numbers and a list of restaurants that are going to, to be available to them as well. And we're also attaching a map that has all of the allocated parking for the event.
Can we get a sample of that?
Sure you can, yeah, yeah.
I, I agree with Mike and Tom. I mean, I, I've seen the parking lot and it's jammed and folks got to stay somewhere and I have the feeling there are probably going to be some people from out of town that will be coming to it. I agree with Mike that 28K is a lot to swallow for the first time around.
Sure.
What about, I'll just throw it out, but we'll just do half, 10K.
What about, I'll just throw it out, but we'll just do half, 10K. And then what I'd like to see is after the event.
It's not half.
But what I'd like to see afterwards is, like you've talked about your report and everything, to justify for next year and come forward, and then it would be an easier pill to swallow, because we could say, you know, hey, we can, you know, connect the dots.
We understand that. And the numbers that we posted for you guys, as far as the expenses, those are real quotes from the vendors. So whatever you allocate, we'll just have to make adjustments. And please keep in mind, this is one of four allocated events that we have, and we look to do this more often. I mean, we're interested in bringing people to Seabrook. We love Seabrook. We love our location. We love what we have to offer. We want to share it with as many people as possible from outside the area.
Question again?
Yes, sir.
Was this going to be for all four events, or was this just for one event?
That's one event.
You're just trying to do one event? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, if it was for all four events, the 28, it's a little bit more swallowable, but...
Well, your application doesn't allow for the information to be input that way.
Oh, okay.
So we, we wanted to, we actually desired to do that, and have it be multiple events. And just because of the way that the application is, I guess, formatted, we weren't allowed to.
You know, one thing going forward, and this is for council, is that maybe we need to regroup. I mean, this is new. I mean, we're used to keels and wheels and established things. And this is something that, in fairness to the applicant and to the city, is to kind of redefine what we're looking for, the funds, et cetera, so we just don't have, you know, Fred and his harmonica coming up and giving them 50K.
Right.
That, just my thought.
Mayor?
There's one thing to be taken into consideration. Prior to this, we've had well over a dozen events, all of which have benefited the local hotels and restaurants. We haven't received a dime for, for any of those previously.
So I, I'm all for the $28,500 that you're asking for, heads in beds. The whole thing on Hot Tax, I've looked this up, talked to a lot of people about it. The reason they put it that way, prove that you had a head in bed. There's, it's almost impossible. All these other events, they come back and they say, well, we have a percentage and we had this many people. No one knows exactly. And that's exactly why it is. It's, as long as it's doing for exactly that, the, the hotel occupancy tax police aren't going to come out and arrest anybody for giving $28,500 to you for your event, because if you can prove one person stayed in, in a hotel, that's all you need. And that's exactly why they kept it vague like that. They don't say, you have to give us this exact number and, and exactly 21 people for however many thousand that came out to your event. That's why they don't do it that way.
Right.
Just, was there a head in a bed? Now you get to spend the money on it. So I support the $28,500.
Thank you, sir.
Two years ago, we quit funding Yachty Grill, $10,000 a year. That brings in, I don't know how many people to the area, although not all of them stay in Seabrook, obviously. That linkage between heads and beds that Joe just mentioned is absolutely violent. We quit funding the U S Sailing Club that has regattas that bring 20 or 30 families that are here for two weeks at a time and live and stay in Seabrook Hotels. We quit funding the Houston Ballet at $2,000. There's a lot of things we've turned away. At some point, and this is directed more to council than to anyone else, at some point, we have to find a sense of consistency. We can't, we're all over the place with the decisions we're making. How many policies, how many ordinances do we give waivers to? Who wants to answer Yachty Grill when they come back and say, hey, you gave them money? I want some now, too. I know it was two months ago, we're supposed to get it, but give me some, you made the exception for them.
They'll be here next meeting. They've replied.
So, but that's exactly my point. At what point do we actually say we're done with Hot, Hot?
Well...
Well, wait, I, I...
Go ahead.
We have to establish some consistency. We have clear policies on all of this stuff. And we have to act in such a way that we actually respect our own ordinances, and we haven't been lately.
Thank you. Well, I think the reason that it's late is because there was, now we know, but Amanda had sent out an email and it wasn't to everybody.
No, I don't.
I mean, you know, so that was lesson learned, and hopefully we don't, aren't in this situation again. And that was bringing me to my, another question. Can someone, the barge, for instance, apply throughout the year for another event? Is that something that Mike or Gail can answer? Like if, or is that not really one, you know, we have to do it at a certain time of year?
So the process was set up originally for you guys to do, work this into your budget process, so that you see the hot, your anticipated hot funds for the 12 months coming in, and that you could balance off of what your revenues are going to be with the expenses that we have coming out of there.
Gotcha.
So that's, that's why we put together a deadline and actually give you some time to look at it and allow us to plug it into the budget. We've got, at this point, incentives for the reserve that's going to the hotel project. So dipping into reserves will be limited at some point, so that's why you want to balance. And you're, right now, you've got a little bit of flexibility, a buffer with the revenues we're anticipating, but at some point during the year, you would be over budget and dipping into reserves.
Okay. Well, with that being said, you know, the, the original request was, I think, $40,000 a couple of weeks ago. That was, we were talking about. Now he's only asking for 28.5. He's only doing it for one event, but he anticipates several more throughout the year, fiscal year. That's why I'd be more inclined to give him 28.5 out of this. I mean, we, we also fund Celebration Seabrook for $45,000, which I feel like I love it and everything, but it's a party for the city and it's not putting in heads in beds, but especially being a one-day thing. But I definitely, concerts are on a Friday night, a big headliner, there definitely people are going to come and stay the night. You know that. And if he hasn't even had a chance to advertise for this, you can imagine, probably get a sold-out show for that, you know? I mean, if your guys aren't all on board for the 28.5, considering he's got other events to market for, for, throughout the year, then let's find a, find a number that you can agree upon.
We're happy to spread those funds and allocate them to all of the events that we do. And originally, the 40, we, we were trying to encapsulate all of them, but like I said in the application, there just, there wasn't, we didn't have the ability to, to state that. And then, and the first one that we put in was actually rejected. We had two dates on there, but anyway.
I mean, what are your thoughts on what I just said?
Does anybody else have any ideas?
I move to approve $10,000 for Hot Tax for the Fall Fest, Pat Green at Barge, $295.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? It's, I want to give more.
Sure, I appreciate it.
You can.
No, there was four, it was four to...
Okay, so it passes. Okay. It passed.
Good.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. We'll be back.
Thank you.
Consider, I wanted it to be higher. Okay. Consider and approve by record vote the fiscal year 2024-25 proposed budget, including general fund, enterprise fund, capital improvement program, CIP, and all special funds, and set the date and time for the public hearing on September 27, 2024 at 6:00 PM.
All right. I'm going to pull up your agenda briefing. When you approve this, we'll need a record vote, so we've got the motion outlined for you in the briefing. If you'll give me just a moment. Will I say that? Rachel, that's not going to get me to the agenda briefing on the monitor, the council monitor.
You want me to pull it up?
I don't think you're going to be able to share it. I'll, I'll go back to my presentation.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay. So council, on the budget, this is the motion. You've made one amendment, so I added language in here that as amended, so you've amended the general fund by option D for your live streaming. So you'll be adding $18,370 to the general fund. So that needs to be included in, not as presented, but as amended. And then you'll need to take a record vote, if that's the only amendment.
Okay, so the record vote being to approve the budget with an amended, amended line item for the live streaming of $18,000. Where's the number?
$18,370.
$18,370. Okay, we'll have the record vote, starting at Jackie, yea or nay? Oh, where's the motion? Oh, I'm sorry. We...
I just need to read it.
Oh, can somebody read the motion on the screen?
Can I ask just one question real quick? So earlier when I was asking about the, the stabilization in the port fund, because that, I saw that on there, it's like page four or 14, that we're going to be using those. I just want to double-check that the port fund is, what is that for? What is it being used for now?
So the settlement was what we consider the port fund, from the Port Houston. The 1.6 million's not been touched. We, when we came earlier this year and did the first ambient sound reading, that was approximately 8,000, and we took that out of that.
Right.
We'll have a follow-up sound reading, and that is proposed in this budget for another 8,000 to come from the 1.6. So there's...
Okay, so that's not, that's still being used for what it was intended for?
Right. Those are the only two things that we've touched that, those monies for.
Okay. I don't know why I read it different, or I was confused on that. Okay, thank you.
I move to approve.
Go ahead, Jackie. Make the, make the motion.
Motion to approve proposed budget and capital program budget as presented and/or as amended for fiscal year 2025.
To include...
To include...
To include the option D live streaming of $18,307.
Seventy.
And $7.
Seventy.
$70, excuse me.
Okay. Okay. Call for the record vote. Jackie, yea or nay?
Yea.
Yea. Yea. Yea. Nay. Good. Okay, it passes. You got that? Okay, it's 4.4. Consider to take all appropriate action by record vote on a proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2024-25 and on setting the public hearing for a special city council meeting on September 27, 2024 at 6:00 PM.
I move to set a proposed maximum tax rate of .455156 cents per $100 valuation to include an MNO rate of .351251 and an INS rate of .103905. I also move to set a public hearing date on September 24, 2024, to adopt the city's budget and tax rate.
Second.
Call for the vote. Jackie?
Yea.
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 Yea. 5.0. Adjourn budget session and enter into regular city council section. 6.0. Consent agenda. 6.1. Approve the minutes of the August 20, 2024 city council meeting.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, I'm sorry.
6.2. Consider to take all appropriate action in second reading of ordinance 2024-15, a request to change the zoning classification of land located at 4017 Toddville Road, Seabrook, Texas 77586. From the current classification of R1, single-family detached residential district, to R2, single-family detached residential district, small lots.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Hold it.
I'm sorry.
An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Seabrook, which is part of the Seabrook City Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning, Article 2, Administration, Section 2.05 Official Zoning Map, by rezoning 16.479 acres of land situated in the Ritson-Morrison survey. Abstract number 52, city of Seabrook, Harris County, Texas, located at 4017 Toddville Road, which is located west of Toddville Road, south of West Flamingo Drive, and north of Mystic Village Lane, being more particularly described by meets and bounds in Exhibit A, from R1, single-family detached residential district, to R2, single-family detached residential district, small lots. For the development of a single-family detached residential development, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict herewith, providing for a penalty in the amount not to exceed $2,000 for each day of violation of any provision hereof by inclusion into the code and providing for severability. Now.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor? 7.0. Old Business. 7.1. Consider to take all appropriate action in second reading of ordinance number 2024-11, a request for approval of a final planned unit development, PUD, to create 5815 Old Highway 146 Monroe Quiet Warehousing Project, comprising of two 23,980 square-foot tilt-wall constructed warehouses located on a six, or I'm sorry, on a 3.695 acre tract of land. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Seabrook, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning, Article 2, Administration, Section 2.05 Official Zoning Map, by rezoning 3.695 acres situated in that abstract 52 of the Ritson-Morrison survey in Seabrook, Harris County, Texas, generally located east of Old Highway 146, north of Red Bluff Road, and south of Port Road, and being more particularly described by meets and bounds in Exhibit A, from C2, medium commercial district, to planned unit development. For the development of two tilt-wall warehouses, each containing approximately 24,000 square-feet of floor space, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict herewith, providing for a penalty in the amount not to exceed $2,000 for each day of violation of any provision hereof by inclusion into code and providing for severability.
Move to approve 7.1.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to add a comment. If you drive down 01, there's been a lot of comments about warehouses and people against them, et cetera. If we don't put a financial buffer in there, it stays vacant land. Vacant land is cheaper than developed land. And the port's going to develop it, and if you ride down 0146 now, you will see that there's two more warehouses outside the city limits of Seabrook that are going in. So, I mean, it's, it's there. And believe me, the port has friends in Houston, Harris County, Austin, and Washington, DC. So the best we can do is try to build a buffer to protect the city as best we can.
Any other comments? I have a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? 8.0. New Business. 8.1. Consider to take all appropriate action on the approval of an interlocal agreement between the city of Seabrook and Lakeview Police Department for the use of Seabrook jail facility and telecommunication, telecommunications 911 operator services for an initial period of nine months from January 1, 2025 to September 30, 2025, with a one-year option to extend annually and authorize the city manager to execute.
Mayor and council, I'll let, Chief had entered into a discussion and negotiations with our partners, and I'll let him kind of give you the high-level summary of what this proposal is.
Mayor, council, good evening. This proposal is, basically, we're already working with Lakeview, anyway. We're very closely tied with them. We often support them and they support us. Right now, if we need their support, we have to switch over to another radio channel, the one they're operating on with another agency, to get their assistance, since they're the closest other agency. This would enable them to be on our channel. We're all talking on the same channel. We're all being able to back each other up. The impact to the city, as far as calls go, it's about 16 calls a day on average, which is less than one an hour. So the impact on our dispatch team will be insignificant. They're jailing, they put about 55 people a year in jail.
They're jailing, they put about 55 people a year in jail. That's their average. That would be of no consequence. The return for us is the ability to receive funds that support the city, which we could then use to augment our dispatch, so that we're paying overtime to support, or to help support two agencies in our efforts, and to also make repairs, much-needed repairs in our jail, again, to support two agencies. So it's really a, they're helping us with some money, and we're going to help them with a service, but the level of service that we're going to extend to them is not going to overburden the city, so we're not going to have to increase staff, equipment, or anything like that. It's just a matter of adding a little bit more work on our end for compensation.
Move to approve 8.1.
Second.
Any more questions?
Yes. Yes. And if we're full? And if we're full, we reject their prisoners. We have ultimate authority to decline any prisoners coming into our jail, and that's part of the agreement. And how many retention cells do we have here? Six, total. Six. And that will stay that way? You're not going to remodel? No, we can't add anything else. Okay, all right.
Okay, I have a motion and a second all in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
8.2, consider to take all appropriate action on an updated interlocal cooperation contract with OmniBase Services of Texas for failure to appear program. Jessica?
Good evening, mayor and council. This interlocal agreement is something that's being revised. OmniBase is a service that is used to, whenever someone has issued a warrant, after the warrant is issued, we have this agreement to allow us to have a hold put on an individual's driver's license who has not complied with the judge's orders. So basically, all this is, this is just a rewritten agreement to basically stay within, basically with the updates that were made with the 88th legislative state. NDPs created this updated version, provided it to us, and we just need your approval.
Move to approve 8.2.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
8.3, consider to take all appropriate action on a one-year contract extension agreement between the city of Seabrook and Hydro Dry Incorporated for post-disaster restoration and recovery service.
Mayor, council, this is a, they currently have an agreement in place, the three-year agreement, which is coming to an end. So we, in the original agreement, we had a section in there that we could extend the contract, of course, with your approval, for the primary services for Hydro Dry.
Move to approve 8.3.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thanks. 8.4, consider to take all appropriate action on a one-year contract extension agreement between the city of Seabrook and First On-Site Restoration for post-disaster restoration and recovery services.
So this is our secondary contract, same thing, just extended their one-year agreement as per the original agreement from the three years.
Move to approve 8.4.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, council.
Thank you, Kevin. 9.0, discussion. 9.1, discussion regarding the Economic Development Corporation bylaws as amended by Resolution 2011 to 2014. Joe?
So I was looking at this the other day, and going back to last January when we had that meeting with the lady from, that wanted to talk about economic development, but what, some of the things that are in this document, I don't think we're doing, and a couple of them are, or three of them are meetings. We were supposed to have a meeting and a report. The annual work plan outlining anticipated activities, tasks, projects, programs to be undertaken by the board during the upcoming fiscal year. The annual work plan shall be submitted to the corporation's annual budget as outlined in Section 7.02 of these bylaws. I don't recall ever getting that. And then, the board shall make detailed annual report to the city council once each year, no later than February 1. I don't think we got that. Obviously, it's after February 1. And then, a mid-year report covering the period of October 1 to March 31 shall be made by the board to the city council. This semi-annual report made no later than June 1. Such reports shall include, but not limit to, the following, and there's, there's four things: accomplishments, anticipated short-term challenges, long-term issues to be addressed, and a recap of all budgeting expenditures for the first six months. So I guess my question is, did I miss these? I haven't missed a meeting. I haven't seen them, and I'd like to get, find out why we didn't get reports.
The biannual report, you are correct. We had drafted that with the change, and so we can definitely get that over. The other question that you had as far as the plan, the strategic plan had not been done with the board, so we did meet in joint session with a consultant to build a strategic plan to fulfill that portion of the bylaws for the first time. Typically, there was a four bullet list of items that the board came up with, goals. So the strategic planning process was meant to build a more elaborate plan. The strategic plan that we have on the website is a two-year plan that outlines all of those goals and measures.
Okay, so when Paul Chavez was the EDC guy, he would come here and give us these reports. And we got him every time, per this, because I remember him, because he would show up two or three times a year, and kind of, he's kind of got that personality. He's outgoing, he'd laugh, he'd sit in the back, and he'd tell you what we did. So I don't know, we're just not getting him now. So it's been almost a year since he left, and so I'm trying to find out why. And then, Rob, earlier you brought up, we're not following some of our policies or procedures, so I'd like to know why. And I think that's a question to all of council. Why aren't we doing this? And I heard an answer, which was, well, we have to talk to some people, and we have to get some stuff, but there's a dead, there's a deadline on this. I know what happens on deadlines if you're not there. That's the company I work for, a billion-dollar corporation, has deadlines, and you better meet them, because it means not for long if you don't do it. So I'm trying to figure out why, and it's, there's just a lot of things, and that's why I kind of get angry at this. I find this, and I'm going, well, where the heck are these, you know? And then I get some weird answer, which is just kind of gobbledygook, in my opinion, of why we don't. So I'd like some answers. I'd like to see these reports. They were way overdue, because we're now in September. So I didn't see a February 1, and I didn't see a June 1.
I will work with the board, and we'll get those over to you all.
Any more discussion? 10.0, routine business. 10.1, city manager report to city council on various items that require no action, including Port Houston updates, port, post-hurricane recovery efforts, Seabrook boards and commissions, transportation projects in the city, or Seabrook CIP projects.
Mayor, we have skipped over one thing, and we need to go back. So we need to look at the motion that was made on the tax setting. So if you could go back on the agenda to the tax reading, I'm about to put on your council monitors. There's some SB2 language that we did not put into that motion. So if you'll give me just a minute, we'll put that up on your monitors. But if you don't mind rereading that particular item on the motion for the tax.
I'm looking for it. I'm getting there.
Was this the first one or the second one?
The second one on your open budget, 4.4.
4.4. 4.4, consider to take all appropriate action by a record vote on a proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2024-25, and on setting a public hearing for a special city council meeting on September 27, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. Can we get the motion back on the screen?
The motion, can we, is there a screen?
Oh, it was the two-part motion.
Okay, so on your monitor, our apologies, this should have been marked into your motion, so if it can, we'll just open back up as a subsequent motion to that item. Okay. So if one of you will make this motion with this specific language to add to this one, we appreciate it.
So this be an amendment to the original?
Correct.
Okay, I'd like to amend the original motion to read, "This year's proposed tax rate does not exceed the no new revenue tax rate. A motion to adopt an ordinance, resolution, or order setting the tax rate does not require the language about tax increases stated in 26.05 of the property tax code."
Make a motion to approve? Do we have to, do we have to prove, prove the first motion?
You're amending the thing to another record vote.
Okay, so we can just vote on this, right? Okay, so I have a motion and a second all in, record vote, Jackie?
Yea.
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 Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Okay, back to 10.1.
All right, mayor and council, routine business. Just a few updates. Mainly, we've had a lot of staff time committed to wrapping up the debris haul, so we've had a couple amendments to the debris. As mentioned in a previous slide last council meeting, we are roughly about 660,000 in on our recovery efforts. That includes our debris, as well as some first responder time that we had with personnel costs, as well as numerous different and small, thankfully, different claims that we'll be submitting. So we'll be submitting all of this with Kevin Rogers through emergency management to FEMA for a 75% reimbursement back. That's the, with the disaster that we have with the governor, so we'll hopefully get that back to the coffers. And that's my kind of reference in the budget, so we'll start to see those disaster show up in your future forecast and monthly updates on the financials. Transportation-related, there's not a lot. If you've drove our area, again, our landscaping crew with the second contract is here at Nassar Road 1, so the riprap, the planting of the beds is starting to go in. The green plantings will happen, hopefully, in the next 30 to 40 days. And your second project for 146 at the north side is well underway. You're seeing the sidewalls, MSE wall sidecuts go in. All of the panels with your branding has been delivered at the Williams Brothers camp there on the right-hand side. Your Weber camp on the left-hand side is starting to dismantle. They're hoping to be out of town, and that graded sidewalk in by November, mid-November. So we'll start to see some clearing on the left-hand side, which will be part of the landscaping package, and some planting will happen on that side of Red Bluff as well. We passed the question, I think it was previously asked by Councilor Diagrosso, that we were trying to figure out if there were going to be any tracks to be kind of cleaned up over there. They did respond to us, not with the timeline that we're happy with, but within the next couple of months, they went through all the things they're planning on doing as far as the rail, popping it back up and making that section smooth. So unfortunately, it's not going to be a quick fix, but they do have it on their agenda to get that done. We were very happy this week to finally get two emails and notifying us as far as the grants portion of this update. We've been reporting for a very long time that we've got almost a million dollars in grants for generators. Two of those came in. So in your next agenda, we'll have resolutions of award, and we can move on with getting those, hopefully, in order. And that was our mobile generators and our city hall generator. Trans, other CIP projects, we also got a notification that we're, Harris County with our partnership grant, that was for North Meyer is moving ahead. Staff met with them today, and they'll be wanting to do some public meetings to go out to the public, to let them know what the potential scope and redo of North Meyer will look like, get some additional public input before we proceed, and then we can get some better design plans over there. Other than that, if there's any questions from mayor or council?
I got a couple. Hey, great job on the generators. That's a big deal. I know we needed them. That's perfect. I'm glad they're here. Any news on the pier and a boat ramp? I'm getting a lot of that, questions.
Same response. The pier is, as we remember, it's about a little over $2 million project. Texas Parks and Wildlife is one grant that we can continue to look at, but we're going to most likely have to find some other grant opportunity, other than council looking at additional debt funds for that. That's a, this particular, the way it's designed, it's a very particular expensive pier, at over $2 million. The boat ramp, again, TexDOT, we haven't had a recent meeting on that one, but we have had multiple meetings. The boat ramp is with a consultant on the TexDOT side. They're paying for that. The one and final design that they landed on looks similar to going, the bridge sets where the two bridges meet will be one lane. The old railroad tracks, they'll convert to another lane, so it'll be a U-shape in. And the actual boat ramp, what they're looking at the design, will be where outriggers used to be. So there's dredging involved, there's transportation roads of getting those all designed. They're working concurrently with the Kemoside, so, but the consultant is active. TexDOT is paying for that, and TexDOT has communicated to staff and to the mayor that, to make the city whole with putting that back. So I don't think we'll have any cost. It's just time, and they've moved that, our understanding, they've moved that to the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers to start getting the permits, which can take up to 18 months.
Any other questions? 10.2, establish future meeting dates and agenda items.
Mayor and council, your next regular meeting will take place on September 17, and you'll now have a special meeting that will be held on September 24.
Do I hear a motion? All in favor? Hi. We're adjourned at 8:14.